If we can call to order the December tenth. Meeting of the North Beach Planning Commission, we have few items on the agenda tonight. I assume. We do not, doesn't look like we have minutes to review. So I assume. The commission members have had a chance to look over. Item number one, eighty thirty two Frederick Avenue. Everybody had a few minutes to look that over. So this is eighty thirty four Frederick Avenue was approved to subdivide and replant into lots. The new lot received approval for variance. A lot size with. Variance is granted reduce a lot with thirty seven and a half to thirty five and reduce the side setbacks from eight to five. Been subdivided, but. What happens to that? Part of lots. Any other comments from the commission? On the site plan?
Pretty clear.
Yeah.
This is just like. The basic part was approved previously, it's just adding the next bit and the desk on the back. Right?
That's what it looks like.
Two foot on the house and then.
Four feet less. Of a foundation, but the house is two feet longer. It was one that was been at last time, but we had not redlined.
Iron.
We could not adjust the water quality management.
One had to call that out on. Okay. They ran the numbers as if.
Okay, so it's slightly better than.
Yeah.
It seems fairly straightforward unless there's any other comments, someone can make a motion. That seem appropriate? Yeah.
Like I make a motion to accept as proposed. The permit request for eighty eight three two Frederick Avenue.
You have a second?
Second.
Go in favor.
Oh, thank you. It's real clear package. Appreciate that.
Great. Good luck. Item number two. Proposing three unit multifamily structure. Stress ninety one oh eight Chesapeake Avenue. Broad isn't CM zoning designation, not in critical area, not in the payment plan, twenty five by hundred fifty lot totaling thirty seven fifty square feet.
He is incredible.
Let me ask why there's not a. Post development site plan with this package. It shows. Entirety of the site improvements, including. The walkways, assuming that the calculation for the impervious area includes. I'm assuming also that there's a. There's a walkway to the stairwell and the parking area that's not shown in the ground, that's calculated into impervious area. And the calculations based on that, but we should have a. We should have a post development site plan that shows all the improvements. In order to.
But everything was included, all the sidewalks as per the site.
I just, I don't have that here. If. Questions like. Well, I guess it's the north side with a two and a half foot. Setback. I'm assuming there's rain barrels on that side. Right, so. That pretty much makes that whole side inaccessible. The rain barrel is going to block away two, two and a half feet, you can't get by it. I think we've had this issue before with regard to. I think you have windows on that side. The access for emergency services. Also, I don't know. I can't tell if there's no final grading plan, if the. Rainwater that comes off of that roof would end up going onto the neighboring property. From the final grading plan. Well, the rainwater from the roof will go into the rain barrels and into the mall. I don't. Don't see the mulch. Know what's, what's proposed there because we don't have the plan. And there's another point in here that shows a planting area that it's like it's on adjacent property. So.
Can you print those out?
This is not. I don't know why this is showing up like this.
I didn't, I didn't blow it up though. It's not in a hurry.
No, no.
Maybe it's the last.
I was pretty adamant about.
You need to go back up.
I know it's down below that.
Is it?
After the first thing, yeah.
Oh, that's the plan.
A little bit of a discrepancy on that.
I know you said the north side, you know, with the two and a half foot setback.
Yes, sir.
Is intended to be inaccessible. If you have a rain barrel on either. It makes that north side inaccessible.
Previous meeting.
Right? And on the south side, if you're only three.
Foundation. So they put that. Yeah.
Backside of the house, it's not on the side side of the house.
Yeah.
On either shot, either front hand wheels.
Yeah, I have to leave that accessible. Because Donnie with the public works once.
Now, is there a water meter room?
We discussed.
That's at the street, that's a term valid for him.
So. Where is the water meter located?
If you look at the floor plan, it's on the first floor, most directly opposite of the stairwell. Middle.
It's on, it's on the stair side?
No, opposite of the stair.
Opposite side.
Yes.
When you go to this.
Do a went through or what?
You go up here. They go through its requirements. Partner spaces.
Oh.
The plan there. Yep. Facility room, yeah.
Yeah.
That, that shade, that back corner we made into the. There is a surprise world.
Right. And between, between the water heater and the age background.
The chase. Yeah, it says H back, I don't know why it says H back, but it was. Considered to be a chase earth, you know, before in the design. We made that bigger, brought the water heater out a little bit and made it. A thirty two inch door so they have access to the water meters through them.
Thirty two inch door.
The exterior.
Okay, thirty two inch splitter to the property line. Okay. So that doesn't show up on this plan, I don't know that we need to. But is there going to be a walkway there? Is it going to be walked through the mulch? You've got forty seven plants that need to go through here somewhere, are they going to walk over?
In the front of the property, I don't see any plantings on the side yard at all because of that.
So another reason for the site plan is you've got a requirement for forty seven shrubs, for forty six shrubs.
I was going for this way, sorry.
There's no walkway on that side, on the south side. It is seeming to the stereo, right, on the parking area, you do have a walkway there.
Right.
And essentially that's three foot to the property line, is that all you have is three foot of that thirty six inch access?
Correct, but we have like. This outside, thirty six inch backside, essentially a sixty. We designed it that way.
So on, on their property.
On the sidewalk, the one trying to do an investment grade. So there's a contiguous design there.
Suppose he sells that building and the next owner says, no, I don't want you on my property, it's thirty six inch, thirty six inches of access. To the building adequate for the purposes intended?
ADA. Does ADA come into play here?
Not here for a stairwell, I don't think this is an ADA. That would be at the county level.
Just out of curiosity.
We are not required to make this ADA compliant for three units or less.
Just out of curiosity, what's the ADA requirement for sidewalk?
And where and how are you dealing with trash on this property?
We did not provide a receptacle. The tenants are going to be responsible for disposal of our.
Where the trash bins going to go?
There's going to be space underneath the stairwell.
They're going to drag trash cans out to the streets or are they going to dump scraps?
There's three units, that's three trash bins and three inside bins. Yeah, for that.
Was there a room?
And the parking. And the planter. And the walkway.
There shouldn't be enough room in front of the planner. Yes.
So would you have like a concrete pad here for that? I mean, again, with the grading, I can't tell, but it looks like it's sloped there. Add for trash cans, so they're not going out in Peak Avenue.
So one of the comments from the last planning commission meeting that we had was.
This is.
The um.
Yeah.
Driveway apron, not going up and down and up and down. Made the comment about that, we did talk to Mr. Wolbanks, he's in agreement, we can make it one contiguous apron. And then. The fact, what we would do is. Either asphalt or concrete, we haven't. Completely come to a paved surface. Surround that. When you say aisle in the middle.
I know there's some. Some concern about accessing the property through the alley or parking in the rear. Just no intentions there.
Our intention is to provide the four spaces in the front.
Yeah.
And we've just been using that for construction purposes. Note the citizens that live on that street would first not to have any permanent parking back there. Well, if we do try to put permanent parking back there, it basically is nonconforming with several sections of your location.
We don't have parking enforcement, so how would, if they just started using that alleyway and parking in the rear of the house, there's. Is there any enforcement? No, we don't prevent it, we don't do it anywhere in town. I mean, a lot of people do your parking in backyards. They don't have official parking spaces.
Landscaping plan, don't think a tenant is going to be able to take that on their own. So. We don't rather.
But just to be clear, we don't have a purview or an ability to be able to stipulate. No use of the alleyway as a driveway and no parking. I don't know, I mean, you may have a purview to stipulate that. I will say, we see the flat now. They sit ten feet off of that property line. We do have a ten foot easement.
There's nothing.
We have an utility easement on the back ten feet.
They should. They should try to draw these low lying shrubs down. Right.
More hot, there's no water.
Length. Eastern wealth of the parking area.
The depth.
Yeah, thirty eight from the sidewalk.
You have it finished.
Okay. Section five dash two oh three. Is saying that parking spaces within residential driveway, they'll measure nine by twenty three feet at a minimum for a single driveway space and nine by eighteen for each addition with tandem space.
Right, okay.
So you should have twenty three plus eighteen.
Also no elevation drawings here, but I guess you've seen the. Yeah.
Okay, it's just like great.
You have any, without an elevation or a section drawing, eaves and overhangs?
There are one for every hang, I'm like.
Yeah, they pulled them in because the other ones.
Well, I mean, you're three foot off the property line, I'm not sure how far your eaves come over, I know you're.
Right, they must have brought it back, doesn't look as big there.
Yeah, it's a little tighter.
A couple more. Yeah, that's.
Do you have any, any other? Overhangs or eaves or not, you put overhangs or canopies or anything inside?
It's a little tough.
And this. Seventy five percent of proposed impervious area includes all walkways, either they're not shown in the drawing. You have something that you have a finished plan. So you do have a walkway to there, right?
Right. And this is the new landscape by one that was proposed after the comments from the last meeting.
Okay.
The only. We just concrete the rest of this in the front, it's not allowed, this is. Acceptable, if that's what they choose to do.
Well, that's optional, right? You could cut that and have them make a trash can plan. Right, if you want.
Well, I wanted to keep it ten foot back from the street to allow visibility.
How do you windows on the south side align with the, with his windows, are they like? Six feet apart looking into each other? Not my business, I'm sorry, it's an architectural thing, none of my business. Window to you. Uh, I got a question on the. I don't think we have to worry about the point oh oh five on. Bosporous removal. But. Do you have a sketch anywhere showing me the two trees and the forty six shrub? Is this it?
You got this previously submitted. The water quality management plan didn't show the added tree and shrubs in the front room.
There's a shrub in front of the, where you would need to walk down the side if the firemen need to get down that side. Got to jump over the bush?
No, on my street, they just go ahead and knock the fence over, don't worry about it, I'm not worried about that at all. I've had that happen, so.
Yeah.
Trust me, they'll get there, the question I have is. We look a little short on the shrub number, that's a. So. How are we going to get forty six out there? Is there any more space on the back that you can get?
Stabilize.
Two or three trees.
Twenty four in the front.
Okay.
About three.
But they did say they added one.
I would want that one more disease. You get your visuals from the street, start parking.
Thank you. So that's a good, good point.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear about that.
She's got them, but I'm just. So what's on the back, like back here? Dead back here, what do you got?
That's the ten foot easement.
That's a town easement, okay.
It's not completely, yeah, it's still on, it's down in the attorney's office, but I don't see any reason why it's not.
All right, so basically, when meeting with Donnie with Public Works. Um, there was a couple of different options for the water service for this property. Um, one being the existing service that is currently underneath the brand new sidewalk at the library. So. We worked together to try to come up with a solution, it was more cost effective and better for everybody. The alleyway from Dayton. And then it crossed the property to serve. Mr. Wolbanks' property, so that nobody has to cut open the sidewalk at the library.
But it's a good point too, it doesn't show up here. If you wanted to make that tree. In one tree.
Yeah, so tell me about the trees or are there two or three proposed?
One on the front.
Yeah.
And then two back here.
Okay.
So.
No.
We don't, we don't, yeah, I don't know if you have one, we don't have.
Yeah, I'm curious.
Not fine and not something that gets a car dirty.
Cause Jerome made the point that he would prefer if you only did the two minimum required. You figure to have the one in the south.
Oh, I would.
Just from the streetscape point of view, it really softens up, you know, the mats of front.
Yes.
Yeah. We love it if you did three.
Yeah.
Fantastic, two in the back, one in the front, awesome, yeah, I think it'll, and I think it'll just. Except the appearance of the property, you know. Well.
Yeah, I agree.
No gumballs either.
No, no gumballs. What else, what are the other ones, though?
Yeah. They clog up the drains.
So I, I can amend the water quality plan with. Rick's approval. To show the third tree on it so that it's in the record. I think the amendment can be. Run with it zoning.
Yeah, I am the third, I mean. Water quality. As a last, it's under the station two.
They might only get rid of five shrubs.
We can look at that too, if you'd rather do that. I mean, there are.
You're only short two. Put those in the planter, then you have excess. So, I mean, for our purposes today in terms of what we need to review. Parking. Um, just to, for us to come to some agreement on, and then also the. Uh, setback requirements. And we would typically do a recommendation to the Board of Appeals in favor of her.
And so we received approval from the Board of Appeals. Because the last meeting you said we could go to the Board of Appeals, so we did receive approval.
Okay.
Already. Um, based upon the comments you made last month.
That's right.
And we did go back to the drawing board and try to look at our design, we get and address your concerns. One of them was the. Uh, what we already discussed about the driveway apron, so we incorporated that into the engineering there. Uh, the visual from the streetscape, adding the tree and the landscape outline to break up. The C H concrete, I think somebody put it. On the other.
And just, I'm sorry, briefly on that, do you plan to use concrete in the front presumably or something else?
Um, we haven't discussed it, but I know we need to have a discussion between the things and also.
Yeah. Complimentary.
The biggest thing is we want to be cotton. Has a continuity in our design.
Sure.
So that, I mean, it goes on the main street of the town.
Yeah.
You know, we want to have some continuity there.
Okay, no, just curious on that, I'm sorry to interrupt, please.
And then one of the bigger things that we discussed was the. Safety of backing out onto Chesapeake Avenue with the proposed parking. And conversations. The owner has agreed to put signage up and notice the tenants lease agreements that they, it's back in parking only. Uh, which will help with. Then our backing up, there's also with. Then our backing up. There's also with the design that has been created has, has opened up like a sixty-foot area. Between enormous house and Mr. Will Banks, a sixty-foot area of shoulder, let's call it. That is currently now parallel parking. Um, so there'll be an extra nine feet to be able to manipulate parking. Vis- visibility and such. And then, um. Yeah, so and then. The, um, mass objections to from the Nate moves to. Putting parking in the back. Um, I did look at the design for that. Um, and it would definitely be non-conforming from all the parking specifications that are set within the ordinance.
Okay.
Various ways, but, um. This, this design is basically the, um. Best use and best visibility for the town, I think. Visually. So my words up there.
The problem with parking in the rear was the alley bunched up against. And so the alley fifteen foot, you're a twenty-five foot wide lot, as opposed to the houses that sit.
Perpendicular.
Perpendicular. There was no way for cars to turn around, so it was really difficult. It's got the entire length of the alley to get out of.
Exactly.
Parking spaces.
Okay.
Where did we land about, um? Difficulty for tenants. With tandem parking. As I, I was able to find, um. An article. From Red Cafe actually about, um, tandem parking and how to manage it for rentals. And. Basically, their recommendations mostly were. For something where. The people who are doing the tandem parking live in the same place. Like matching your schedules and having spare keys available, which is not something that you're going to find if you. Have essentially three separate shotgun houses on top of each other as rent. Because you're gonna have different families. So how, how are you going to address those issues?
Maybe just a preface, I, I'm not sure where our purview ends. I'm a little confused on this as well about what's good practice versus what is. You know, your solution to renters and parking, but I can tell you to add on your point. My concern with that. Is that there may be a tendency for the second car not to, to stay out on the sidewalk. So they don't have to move the front car potentially, just as practice that they will. Stay out as far as they can to potentially the car in front can get out without them moving. That, that's only my concern. For that, and that's a safety issue having your car and in the sidewalk, how you want to manage it and the difficulties for your tenants. I, I feel that's up. To them.
Yeah, I only mentioned it because we have to decide. How we're going to do parking.
Yeah.
So if we're looking at tandem parking, then I look at, okay, what are the potential?
Exactly, and that's where, that's where my brain goes when I start leading, when I start thinking about that, like, um, what tenants may do and how it. You know, how you decide to do it is, is for you, but how the tenants do it in practice may be an issue for the town. And, and have things, so. Um, yeah, I, I'm not sure. How to manage that.
Well, my logical s- solution would be to allow one to have two cars and two to have one car.
Yeah.
When the people are home, the car isn't be there. So then if someone needs to move the car, then they would be home. To access it and be able to move the situation. We can write that into the lease.
Yeah.
That they're gonna cooperate. Say that they're not gonna have rights specifically to front or back and, and, and just go from there. So we can, we can write that, that portion into the lease, but if you have two on one, and the logic is that if there's. A car there, then someone's gonna be able to move it.
Yeah.
Unit A first floor, for example, has this spot and this spot. And then unit B would have this spot, unit C would have that spot, so those two people have to move.
Right. One of them possibly.
And what happens if the person closest to the building has an emergency and needs to leave and the other person? Left with somebody else and bought the car there. That's, that's what I have to look at because that's setting up something that's not safe. If they need to get out and they can't. Because the other person is nowhere around to move that car. That's an issue.
That's different than any other situation if the car is blocking access. There'll be access to like a tow truck. People aren't in compliance to the lease. Way apartment life is. Where I look at it, but I don't know. I'd have people too.
Didn't we look at having six spaces? Your building has three units with three bedrooms. Joining property has three units with two bedrooms. You've got like three more bedrooms, which is a potential, potential for more cars, so. Why would I not look for more parking?
Well.
Because you have more bedrooms, so you could have nine different cars.
I understand what you're saying, but that can be solved in that situation.
And then we don't have.
Yeah. Yeah.
I mean, at some point. We have to. Start looking at realistic parking requirement.
Yeah, or non-re requirements.
Yeah, I mean, if you're gonna follow the density stuff everybody's pushing for.
Yeah.
You're gonna run out of parking. I mean, it's just by. By fiat, so. Tandem parking is not wonderful, um, but they can take care of it in their lease. They'll have to deal with that. And any comments on the overall projects in the public? It's pretty, uh, we're a pretty, uh, intimate group tonight. You feel free to stay seated.
The live property of us on the north side of the alley. Very pardoned by the fact that I take the pardon. Completely agree with Mr. Trump, who said about parking in the alley and access that if you haven't been through their car. I mean, I invite you to try going through during your car and seeing how that works. Not particularly fun, not fun for me either because my propane tank and my property. And I'm always worried when I see a car coming through that's not familiar with navigating. There's one little clip. I don't like destructive testing things. I especially don't like the ones pressurized. So I'm very happy to see it's in the front. I really need to keep it in the front. Um, so that's number one. Number two, is there any way to block off physically back to property just to. Find a little bit of encouragement for people to not try. There are shrubs, there are, there are trees there. That's great. Nobody's gonna try and get an idea. Put like a U-Haul back there just for that one time to get stuff out there. I, college roommate tried using U-Haul once and crashed it, and I can just imagine someone moving in on themselves would try and back it in and you get. Same sort of problem. Yeah, insurance covers that, but I. Rather than I go that, so that would be one question. And the second one, um, like that immense. We're not fans, like some stuff from that. We get it as. In a year, there's. And we won't deal with it. Um, I do get really worried though when it's these very big trucks. There have been a couple instances where one of the premiums, they keep out volume to advance. The twenty-foot bamboo pole. Came out and started lifting the wires that had come in. Hole down to my house. I think it's my power line. I call up, I have to find the property or the, uh, the contractor, call them up. And tell me, no, no, trust me, it's just your cable and TV. It's not your power lines. We wouldn't do that. Well, I didn't know that, or when you have a truck that's. But, um, you know, that one was a really interesting day. They backed it up through the alley. And you can't angle it a certain way. It bent the ceiling fence a little bit, you know, it bent back. Luckily, it's just a little bit of deformation and it came back. But, um. We can get those things off, so what they had to do is un-latch them and put some new straps down there and kind of like push them off, just slide them off the truck. All these big trusses. Crashing down, they weren't damaged, house looks fine, but as a property owner. I get real nervous about that, the old day. So I'm really asking, there are ways to get the structure in such these things that look nice. In the Bay Avenue or Chesapeake Ave, sorry, for. Little part of the day, just to not pack it up. The, the ground's not particularly great there, if you see it raining, it's all. The drivers see the very best. I'll put them in that position. Please don't put me in that position. That's all I have to.
Great, uh, thank, thank you for your comments, um.
I would also like to name an incident. It's pitch black between his house and my house.
Can you, can you give your name and address for the records?
Right across from him. I'm at four oh three two fifty. And so I go out with my trash. From my kitchen. And I turned on my porch light, so that don't block the alley. And so I go into my alley and I have a wire fence. From the alley to, and I set my trash cans between my storage shed and the fence. So I'm standing in the alley leaning over the fence to put my trash into my trash can. And somebody is backing down the alley. It's pitch black. They never stopped. And they came within inches of me. Now I have that on camera, so it must have been seven, eight o'clock. It is dark in that alley. And it is unsafe to try to back out of that alley at any time really, but especially at night.
Was this construction related? Okay.
Might have been the owner. It's a, it's a white car and I don't know maybe he. I don't know. Obviously, he wasn't really a hundred percent a tenant. Or he would have blown his horn or something because I'm bent over like this trying to put my can, the bag into the can and I got it. The lid is stuck and I'm trying to get that off. And then all of a sudden here the car is right beside me. So I don't hear very well. And, uh, you know. So you have to consider that. What do we do for safety? Not just for children, but for all people who don't hear very well either.
Thank you. Thank you for the, for the comment. Um, I mean, it seems to raise a, 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 an issue about. Potentially residents trying to use the rear. Um, I, I know there was landscaping in the rear. I don't know if a fence or anything is proposed. I, I, I think there's some validity to. People potentially moving in and out, maybe wanting to use that area, you know, when parking. If parking is an issue or that they may try to use that rear area for access. So I think it's a, I, I think that is a fair concern to try and. Limit that somehow, limit any incentives to having people.
Property line, property line.
Fifty percent of the landscape is actually the property.
And when we start off the project, before we go any further, we, we hop on everyone's door and they. Pass out my business card and I go, I go talk to the people and. Hey, if you need anything, this is my phone number. If we have an issue, let me know. And we respond. We're in real estate as well, so we answer our phones. So that's number one. Number two. I don't know about the fence because I don't know, now we have this area, this area of easement.
Yeah.
How does that affect the fence effect easily?
Yeah.
And number three is we're, we're sufficiently willing to have deliveries and, and, you know. Look like everyone else has to use, no one owns that, or the town owns that alley, so we would, we would need to utilize it at certain times, but. We also need, I would, I would make sure that no one's moving a delivery or driving down that, that, that night. That's, that's not likely.
Okay.
Delivery should be happening.
I, I mean, is there, I, I'm trying to understand the incentive for construction deliveries in the rear of the property. Um, is it just, I mean, there, there seems to be. I mean, the, the space at the front is open, correct? So is there any, maybe I'm missing something. Is there?
I'm towards Kelly. I live at four oh three two fifth street. I received an email from Rick that said they were gonna have everything that I still have. Coming down the alley because Chesapeake was the major.
It was busy, yeah. Okay.
And they typically dump dresses. Unless there's a crane sitting right there on the day of the delivery, but typically they just roll them off the package truck and then they'll pick them whenever the train.
Yeah. I mean, but you've got, uh.
The pointy.
What do we say? You've got forty feet in the front of the house that presumably should be accessible for at least most. Average-sized trucks. Maybe a trust truck might not fit there, but. Is that reasonable to try and do most of the deliveries in the front?
Right now, there's a curb.
Oh, there is.
Yeah, so until we do the curb cut, hard for these trucks to pop the curb and be safe.
Yeah.
How wide is the alley, right?
Maybe we could provide better notice, um, when we start construction.
Um, wider than the driveline on Chesapeake Ave.
Wider than the driveline on Chesapeake, okay. No, I, 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 I'm, I'm sympathetic. The trucks.
We put our trash cans up on the corner.
Yeah.
Cause on his side, he's got a sign that says alley closed, no dumping. So for ours, we put, cause we don't want our vinyl fence destroyed.
Yeah.
So we, we're our trash cans up to kind of get some.
Yes, yeah.
So what other? I don't know. I, I mean, we're, that's. The construction accessibility, we're pretty limited on that, that.
Yeah, I mean, in some ways that's.
I consider the county permit. All, all I'd recommend is that. Uh, so what do you got? You got concrete, you got block, you got trusses. Then you're gonna shove all the she, sheetrock in at some point. Okay, so are you saying? I know, but that's why I'm asking, so. But you also have to, you know. Subs gotta have flagmen, you gotta do all. Subs gotta have flagmen, you gotta do all that stuff, cause you're on a ma- major thoroughfare, right? Okay, so. I'm gonna try to come in the back. Okay, so that's why this guy's here, right, cause. So you need to address that with your, with your adjacent property owners. I live in Atlantic, so let me tell you crane ops are a bear. But we've done a whole bunch of them, okay? So you gotta get out there and you gotta talk to people, cause once they put those at riggers out, that's usually not on your site. With a site this tight. Right, pressure's a monster, that's why this gentleman here was talking about his lines. You gotta be, you gotta be aware of that, you gotta tell them when it's coming and where it's going. The town will do road closure, right, if they need it. Although that's tough, I mean, we own that part, that's, that's no longer. But that's no longer pulling a state, uh, permit though, right? Back in the day that you'd had to go M dot with the whole.
One of the restrictions too on the front of this is there are three overhead B G N E lines that come across there. That makes it really tough for the big deliveries as well.
Okay, so. So if you're gonna come from the back the whole time, are you gonna semi-improve that, or are you gonna rut that out when the weather breaks?
We've been given permission to like gravel down.
Okay. I'm just being practical here, you know.
Been hesitant to put it down because we don't want. Or bring on. Invite more traffic.
What kind of gravel? Reclaim, see gravel, bluestone?
Bluestone, there is a base already there. Um, so far it's held up really well.
So where's your, are you the builder too? Or are you the designer?
Developer owner.
Okay, so what's your truss outfit, where do they wanna come in from, front or back? Cause I mean, if you're not gonna get, you're not gonna get a power outage on the B G N E lines, right, so you're probably gonna. Want to access, so you gotta have a talk with. These property owners, okay? All right, well. Then you gotta take a look at the ground you're pulling that truck in on.
We discussed.
Okay. Well, no, I mean, I'll, I'll give you an example, okay, so. When we were demoing houses along Atlantic Ave, when they were all close to each other. You know, we talked about the permits and demolition and how to do them. And not just come in with a tracthoe and just rip it all out and like shake out the foundations of the two adjacent buildings, right? So your constructability matters. Okay, so you've got all the phone, anybody adjacent, you got the phone numbers for the town, right? Okay, so you gotta get on the horn, if it looks squarely, you're gonna have to get on the phone and say something. We're, we do the, you know, planning commission, the site permits, et cetera, we don't do. The construction enforcement.
Yeah, that, that's really a town matter.
But if it's that tight, you gotta have that discussion up front.
I guess our major concern for two of us is that we're tenants parking in the back. You know, like I know there's some kind of easement that's come up or something.
Yeah.
Uh, when does one car become two, three, or four and it's all the way down the alley? Rick says they're not enforcing any code.
We don't have the landscaping in the back, I mean, there's no.
I mean, I understand.
I mean, if people do end up parking there, i- it's, it's your responsibility to call the town and.
Yep.
People should not be parking there, whether it's for this.
But if they don't do any. They're not responsible, so you would be calling essentially on deaf ears, correct? Because you won't call anyone to remove anything.
Well, we, we remove cars, I, I said we.
Parking enforcement, I think you're speaking more about parking tickets and things like that on the street, but if someone's in the alley.
Someone's parking.
What do the signs currently say? Okay, so. So it's close. What people use the alleys.
It's, it's closed to. People that don't have but the alley.
So, but if you had a no parking sign in the alley. Which is there as well, right? There's like three signs right all the way down on top of each other, I'm not sure if there is or not, honestly.
But I mean, again, it's just, you're not gonna get a ticket.
Ticket I don't care about.
Well, I'm just, that's the deterrence, right, that's the deterrence.
Cars backing down, getting our property, getting his property, pulling all of our houses up. Someone's got a party, there's fifteen cars up and down the alley, you know, that's what we don't want to happen. You know, I can understand stuff's gonna come in.
Issue would be, who's gonna pull the speed limit, how fast are they gonna come down that alley? Because, you know, if you have. Some age people, they just fly down the alley, they, we already know that the speed limit in the town is kind of. Exceeded quite often. So my concern would be, are you gonna light the alley up? Put some lights out there, if we're gonna have people coming in and out the alley. And of course, that will be twenty-four seven, you know, you may have people that will be coming in at midnight. If you had a shift worker or what have you, so. Speed limits, put some lights up, who's gonna maintain the surface of the road? I bought gravel from Dayton down to the back of my house so that I would not have a mud hole to drive through. And the way I did it, because the gravel truck couldn't come down because of the wires going across the alley. I had to just go to Ace and buy like six bags at a time and I just continued to do that. But now that the big trucks have come in for the construction work that they're doing. Most of my gravel is now packed down, so at, at Wes's house, from his house back to. My parking pad, it's just one big mud hole when it rains. So who is going to take care?
That would be the, for that part, I think it would be the county, ma'am. Because erosion and sediment control, you're not supposed to be pulling mud outside of the site. Alright.
They're not the county, they tell me.
Okay.
So I did call, I said, I have, you know, this, and I had all of my receipts. When I went and paid my property tax bill, I teasingly said to the lady, I think I should just file a receipt for all of this because. Nobody seems, the town says they're not gonna do any maintenance on the alley. The county says they belong to the town, they don't own any property in the town. So if you're going to open up the alley back to the back of their property, then we need to determine. Who's gonna maintain that road, cause somebody has to maintain it.
Well, where I was going with the county, just to be clear, okay? Is erosion and sediment control also goes to the county, correct? So if that's now becoming a construction entrance, which is why I asked about. What are the process, what processes you're going to use to use the alley for construction access? Well, then you're gonna have to improve it. To meet the county and the town for erosion sediment control, you're gonna have to improve that entrance. So what I have in front of me has you accessing from the main road. Okay, if you're gonna do something different, then you're gonna have to bring in an amended. Uh, erosion settlement control and construction entrance. Cause that's what I'm hearing. From.
A suggestion to alleviate that because it's really both builders that are accessing it or have been accessing it. Can you guys just get together and do some improvements on that alleyway during the construction process and then restore it? I don't think we necessarily have any purview over that, but being good neighbors and being responsible contractors and builders. Um, you should listen to your neighbors here.
You have noise and, and all of that, the best thing is to keep the alley closed, it's always been closed. I was the only person that ever drove down the alley. Where Wes lives, they never used the alley, it was never used, because it's a dead end alley, it didn't go anywhere. It's not like your alley that you can go from one end out the other end. So it was always technically closed. When my house was built in two thousand five, John was the town engineer. And he was the one who came and told my husband, you're gonna have to provide some backstreet parking back there. Because you're too close to the intersection of Dayton and Fifth. Okay, well, it was a very slow street, there wasn't really any traffic in two thousand four and five down here, okay? So we changed, moved our kitchen from the front to the back of the house and. So that's why we park back there and the kitchen's back there.
The alleys were used before that for trash pickups. When the town had their own trash.
Get that trash truck back there, so my neighbor where Wes lives and I, we brought ours up front for them, we always did. Because the trash truck couldn't get under those wires that go across from my house, they go across my piece of property and connect to Wes's house.
Well, our town trash employees. In the past would go down before you moved.
On ours, because ever since I've been down here, we've always had to take it to Dayton Street.
And we owned a house.
Yeah.
We've been here a while.
How long?
Like two thousand.
I've been here since eighty-five. I've been here since nineteen eighty-five. And they were.
Unique, okay, I do know that because, and we didn't mind.
May I finish what I was trying to say? The employees, the trash employees that we had at the time. Were very, very responsive to our citizens and they would actually go to the backyards. And physically pick up the cans and take them to the truck. So the alley had been used. People have been using it yet to their properties. Just as a total aside, for you, for your own. Protection, you might wanna consider, I mean, this is like, this has nothing to do with me being here and all this. You might wanna consider putting like a motion detector light back there. With a light. Because that way, if you've got a light shining where you are trying to put those trash cans over. You're more visible to any person that happens to be going down that driveway.
Pedestrians always have the right of, so we shouldn't have to deliver.
Well. There's a caveat to pedestrians having the right of way. Um, but we want, we want her to be safe. So having that area lit. If you have to light it yourself, you might wanna consider that, that's all I'm saying, just for your own safety. You might wanna consider putting some kind of a light back there on your property so that you feel safer and more visible, that's all I'm saying.
So on the contracting part. As Steve was saying, if some. Minimal improvements can be made. To, to improve the access there. Um, and make sure it's not muddy, make sure it's at least passable. Um, that would be, it sounds like that would be welcomed by all the neighbors. Um, secondly, it, yeah, I, I, I'm not sure how, but the, it seems that that rear. Only be used for. Rare occasions, yeah, it seemed to you have plenty of space in the front, contractors should be able to park on bay. Routine kind of, you know, materials delivery, you know, a truck can jump a six inch curb and get up in the front of the property, so I would. Say only an absolute necessary kind of circumstances to use the rear. And I would encourage you to have the emails, addresses for the neighbors and give them notice when something happens, and it should be. Like we were discussing, a big, big deliveries are, you know, half a dozen, I'm guessing, or, you know, ten, something, you know, for big items like. Trusses and framing and drywall and things. Um, so. And. If you have issues, make sure there's good communication between, between us on the construction and. Obviously, this is gonna be a somewhat limited. Event, on the longer term, you know, i- it is up to the residents to call the town. If there's no parking there, there's no parking there, yeah, and.
There's a sign.
Yeah, if there is a sign for no parking, then, then there shouldn't be parking there, and I, and I would encourage builders, you know. To do everything you can not to encourage tenants to use that in, in any way. Whether it's a fence, whether it's landscaping, you know, or maybe it's in the lease, you know, that move in and move out. You know, and it should be from the front of the property.
You realize he's got. He's showing S E on the backside of the property, right, on his. On his site plan for his E and S, right? So my, my point was, I don't know how far that's gonna go. It, it looks like it's just gonna stay on the property, so again, depending on what you're driving. So I mean, this is, the, the plan is to use the back. Okay.
You're right, I mean, if you're tracking off of the site, that's a violation.
Right.
So if you're rutting up the alleyway and.
Right, I mean, they got, yeah, right, so they've got like the stabilized here. Right at the end of the property, but yeah, o- once you come off that, what are you doing, you know, you gotta use some common sense here.
Yeah, I mean, that's. It's a short duration, I mean, you're, you're done with your big stuff, right? I don't know what else you'd be bringing in the back, but.
Yeah, I mean, all the finish work can be done from the front, right? Pretty much.
Cause he's gonna be, I don't know, when are you starting?
Probably another six weeks of review with Kelly.
You're about to have this potential overlap of even more vehicles during your floodlot and your startup and construction, right?
Yeah, the, the verbal agreement we have is once we start our heavy construction. He would be far enough along, so he would be under.
Which you're gonna undergo the same thing with, you know, backhoe digging, footers, concrete truck, pouring concrete. Um, you know, trenching and digging for plumbing. So it's gonna go on for another six months anyway.
It's gonna be a poured foundation? And where would they do access for that, on the front or the rear? Cause that'll be a big. Project, presumably.
Yeah, I have to still meet with the, uh, concrete pump truck.
Yeah.
Pump truck driver, words are not flowing tonight.
Yeah.
Um, they said the overhead lines are concerned.
Yeah. Okay, so that seems like a big event, so for that. Obviously, please keep neighbors. Informed of that, easiest thing seems just to have five or eight. Email addresses for everybody, when you have a big event going on. You know, give them notice if you can. No. Okay. Um, we do need to get back to, back to what's in our purview, this is kind of getting on the fringe of. It's getting a little bit further a, a, abroad, um, so for us, um. Special exception still valid for this, right, that's already been done and. The setbacks, I mean, I'm sorry, not special exception, the, the Board of Appeals and. Yeah.
Yeah, they put it on.
Okay, that's already been done.
Yeah.
I think I put it on the, um.
Yeah.
Yep.
Um, so. What we need. I'm a little confused, what we need to do through. Today. Uh, besides the parking. Is there some?
Bill had asked them to adjust some of the landscaping, so all of it was not in the rear.
And they did.
That's right, okay. Okay.
That's, that's joint. Thing between you and the genuine property owner. Is that this, anything have to be done as far as deeds or? If we're approving something that's straddling properties, do we have to put anything in? It says that that has to be handled somehow.
God, if they did not agree, then they would have to.
Right, but would we have to say? You know, as, for example, as far as the motion, include that. Agreement with the adjoining property owners. Remains in effect.
Even that you guys are cooperating with each other. And you can almost pick up a whole nother row of parking if you just paved the whole thing solid and didn't do the plan, in other words, if you straddled the. The, uh. The building. Is that right?
That's correct.
That is correct.
Okay, break that.
I, 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 I would. Yeah, I, 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 for me, I do think. Yeah, I, 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 for me, I do think having fifty foot wide concrete or. Hard material and, you know, of forty foot essentially building in the front, it creates a pretty stark landscape. I think it looks good too, I, I would put another one on the right hand side in the front, you know, a dwarf or something, just to soften that up, whatever you can. Obviously, you can't bring it out too far for sightlines. Um, but whatever you can do to, to soften that up, I, I think is, I think you're, Steve is. Uh, you know, reluctantly, so you're right, but I think for functionality. Would just be to get rid of it all and have maybe six, you know, pull-in spots, but I think. I think that would look.
I love your perspective, man, it, it's just something that typically goes over my head, I like sticks and bricks all the time.
I agree, functionally, I think it'd be great, I think it, it, it wouldn't. Yeah, um, so we, we appreciate you working with us on this, yeah, I, I'm hoping it'll be a nice resource for the town, I think. You know, diversity of housing stock. You know, we do need to improve in the town, I think this, this contributes to that, so, so that is certainly welcome. Um. What do we need to make a motion on in particular? Should we, separate ones or just approve as presented, or? Um, I guess we can just approve as presented if we're in agreement with the parking and the revisions that have been done. Okay. Um. You know, my, my final take on the parking is, uh, not ideal. Um, we've got some, um, housekeeping work to do on our side, uh, for future improvements on parking. Uh, in the meantime, uh, for me, this is not ideal, but they're in compliance. Uh, they've been working with this the best they can to get these things going, um, so I'm fine. Approve reluctantly approving it, uh, the reluctance is more about us getting our. Guidelines in order, so when people come before us, so we appreciate you working with us on that. Um, so I'm.
I, I do have safety concerns.
I have safety concerns, just to, uh, I, with, with the audience members that are here, audience. I'm tired, boy, um.
How many?
I would encourage you, you know, to keep an eye on this, you know, you're gonna be the eyes and ears, a- and if people are parking on the sidewalk, for example. If there are issues, people coming in and out, people, you know, cramming five cars in the front. Um, you know, uh, it, it's up, it's up to you in some ways to be the, the eyes and ears. Uh, for the town, cause you're, you're gonna, you're gonna go in front of that building probably more than most of the people in the town. So, um, so your feedback is also helpful with this. Um. But I'm, I'm ready to present, I mean, I'm ready to approve as presented.
Yeah, I, I was just gonna, uh, just remind, uh, the folks here, so. The required, uh, site plan, which has erosion and sediment control, literally has all the little pieces, parts you're looking for. Where it obligates the, the builder to protect the adjacent places, uh, so I would just. You, you have some control of that as far as the. Uh, you know, the town has listed the alley as closed. Uh, but obviously, for this construction, you've got a permit to allow you to come in and use that. But again, it's in here, and, and the small print, I didn't print out a big one, um, well, you pull it up on their. Actual site plan for erosion and sediment control talks, talks to some of the questions you have. Um. In terms of, you know, running into trees or all these others, so you're, you're, you're covered with that when you call up, it is, it is under permit. Uh, the other uses you're talking about don't really fall. Uh, in this purview, but we're glad you came to tell us. Uh, so that we can, that the town's surprised of it, like I said, Atlantic Ave, we've had. You know, run into these things all the time, uh, you, you just gotta. And their town is very attentive on it, and most, and the builders generally are too, so.
And there is a potential, I mean, some alleys have been closed, right? Is that in response to?
We have had some alleys closed.
In response to citizens or?
We've had some alleys that the, the town has. I guess the term used is abandoned.
Yeah.
And then give it off to the property owners, but in this case, I don't think it's possible to do that with this alley. With them having, I mean, there's live hay in the back.
Yeah.
Give me the alley in half, they would then no longer have access to the alley for next time, that's not a possibility.
Okay. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I will. Move to, uh, approve. The revised and Board of Appeals and Food Site Plan. For ninety-one oh eight, Chesapeake Avenue.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. You abstaining?
There's another option. No.
Oh, no from Jennifer.
Motion carries.
Motion carries, three to one. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I'm really, they thought, uh, motion carries, uh, voting three to one. That's the last item on the agenda, any other business for this evening, any other? Any other comments?
Have we, um, looked at setting up some work sessions to get busy on? Section five.
Yes.
I can be available whenever.
I can be available in January. Uh, thank you everyone for showing up, um, we, we do appreciate, yes.
Just, uh, like on the. Site that you all use, um. The itinerary for his life, because I really posted it yesterday. Like you basically posted it in a much further, like two weeks, so we know what the itinerary on the meetings are, obviously.
Yeah. Yeah.
So that we know, but it's important for us.
What, what, what's?
We find lives, just to let you know.
Typically, it's a little earlier, um. So. What, what is it by law? Only for board of appeals, okay, so typically it is earlier. Um, obviously, we had some odd circumstances, this, sometimes they do run late if, if. People are trying to get on the agenda, but typically it's two, three, four days a- a- ahead of. Try to do it a week out. Yeah, so. You should come back, a lot of interesting stuff, a lot of interesting stuff happens here. Lot of uninteresting stuff. But, or mundane, so I should say.
Uh, the cop plant things sometime in January to house, then. I'll just be more, I guess I can send out. Possible dates to work session, maybe you could get it in February.
Yeah.
In the meantime, I can send out sections, we have access on E break. On our coach right now, I have access to go back. The last code we had had specific parking regulations in, you guys will look at those in the meantime.
Be helpful. Wanna listen like parking specialties. Somebody does this for a living, you know what I mean, like. No, it didn't cause me, uh, who can, who'd like to make a motion?
Uh, make a motion, uh, adjourn the meeting?
All in favor? Meeting's officially closed.